So Fleete, did you hear what happened? We dropped some people on the shore. An old man. He had a handsome prince. He was dreamy. I've never seen a prince before. Hmm, maybe he'll marry me.
Maybe he'll marry me. Good luck, girl. I'm sure he will stir again. Me.
Girls, eat up the bed. I won't have you acting like little fools who are our guests in this castle. Fleete, everything off the table. We have an emergency.
But my mistake!
The duke is bringing the prince to the castle. Keep him unconscious.
I'll bring him tea.
I'll make him medicine.
A little more therapy will be just what he needs.
A nice scotch, we have another.
A late one, some of my favorite travel.
Now we can consume it, they're cruel.
Oh, consume it, they're cruel.
Chicken soup!
Good idea!
Consume it, consume it, they're cruel, they're cruel. Consume it, they're cruel, he's in chanting. Consume it, consume it, they're cruel, they're cruel. It is just chicken soup, boy. Rancid sum, consume it.
Consume it, they're cruel, they're cruel.
It is just the right thing that we need. For my grandmother would say consume it, they're cruel. It can cure anything, indeed.
There are so many more, you can even make this dressing even so difficult. When they're in print.
On sandwich, on sandwich, fromage. Fromage, on sandwich, fromage is just protein. On sandwich, on sandwich, fromage. Fromage, it is just the right food, boy. Rancid.
La la!
On sandwich, on sandwich, fromage. Fromage, it will melt in your mouth, cherie. It is only good cheese, on sandwich, fromage, but I must say, bon appétit!
There's so many more, you can even make... Ordinary things are extraordinary when they're fresh. Escargot.
Escargot.
Or pate.
Or pate.
Escargot, they are smell and bite, they must be bad.
Snail's and mush flavor is...
Escargot.
Escargot.
Or pate.
Or pate.
No one gets what they eat when it's rancid century.
Escargot. Escargot. Or pate. Or pate.
Now I feel like you're less than my dears. Just adding brain cook pot and your cooking saver and friends, you can cook with stuff here.
Uh, Fleete, shouldn't we start making chicken soup now?
Well, well, of course. As my grandmother would say, consume it, they're cruel.
Can cure anything, indeed. Bon appetit!
You are lucky we found you, duke. There was no one else on this island but my favorites to me. But don't you worry now, if anyone can nurse you back to health, we can.
Uncle?
Yes, my lord.
What? What? I've had a change of heart. I will do as you wish. I will marry.
Good choice, my boy. Good choice.
I will marry the girl on the shore, the one who sang to me. Was it one of you? Go on, sing.
Twinkle, twinkle!
No, it's not you. Surely it must have been one of you.
Twinkle, twinkle!
No, none of you have her voice.
I'm afraid there was no one else. Go on, it's maybe your only chance. Who is she? I've never seen her before.
You! It was you, wasn't it?
Try to sing, Annabelle. You can do it if you try.
Please, lovely lady, sing to me. No, it's not you.
That's enough, now let's get her to bed. She needs rest. Girls, fetch her a sleeping bag and a bed. Girls!
Uh, don't cry, Annabelle. Lovely lady, sir. You've got to think of something.
Me? Why do all always have to think of something?
Poor Annabelle. It must be hard for you.
I know what you're thinking. You're wondering what's in this soup? You're wondering if you can use the recipe? Ah, I use nothing. What is here? It looks like onions. It looks like celery. Oh, but what is that recipe? Tell me. Yes, die, you can never run too much time. And listen here, I'm dying fast. The soup is done, the faces are the best things ever, and the soup is... Attention! Is this way you want it?
Are you begging out on this? Lady? As usual, misunderstand me, uncle.
It hurts.
But you said you would get married.
Let me do it.
No, me, silly.
Give it to me!
I am not... There are plenty of girls who are too strong, but you must have love, Edward. Love is the power of the honor.
Excuse me a moment. But I only want one girl, the one on the shore. The one who sang to me. This is true love, uncle.
Excuse me, gentlemen. I found her again on the shore. He's quite unable to speak if he wants to say something.
Extraordinary! I've never seen a girl so haunting. There's something about her I wish I could understand.
Perhaps the lack of a guardian will do right there.
Yes, yes, wonderful idea. May I?
A perfect match.
What my friends, you bet! This perfection must have left a trace in it.
Ah, how dare you come to me with this pathetic story!
Good king, I assure you all precautions were taken.
You call yourself a sea creature? Servant of the great merman and yet, and yet you cannot protect a one-linied mermaid?
Sir, I regret to admit...
And what do you have to say to yourself?
We followed her to the garden of the sea creatures. We kept close watch. She was within our grasp. But the queen was too clever.
Queen? Queen? What queen? None of you has the courage to tell me the truth?
The, 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 Queen Odessa, sir.
Oh, Odessa! Have that witch imprisoned my daughter!
We think that, sir. The girl's mom said that she'll sign away the water. I'm afraid, sir, she, she has abandoned the sea.
Abandoned the sea? You tell me she is on dry land?
That's not all, sir. I'm afraid she's become a, a human.
That is enough, darling. That is enough to cleave my heart into.
We shall find her, sir.
See, see that you do! Bring my daughter home!
Yes, your majesty!
All hail Neptune!
I hope you're feeling better. I wonder where you're from. I wonder what your name is. Somehow, I feel I've seen you before. But that's impossible. Just a short time ago, I walked up onto the shore. There was someone there, with a voice like an angel. Was it real? Or was it a dream? Listen! That's it! That's the voice! That's the girl I've been dreaming of! Let me see your face.
Not now, prince, we are married.
Then we shall be married at once. Uncle, everyone, come here. I have an announcement to make. I have found the girl of my dreams and we shall be wed this very day. We will have wedding cake for thousands and a full night of fireworks.
Oh, my boy, you make me so happy.
Everyone, make haste! I prepare for a glorious beach wedding ceremony. This shall be the grandest celebration this island has ever seen. All right, men. We have orders from the king to find his daughter, Annabelle. In this mission, we shall not fail. Anybody planning to chicken out? Hmm?
Not one, my lord.
Good, then keep your heads down and your eyes open. Follow me!
Your orders are command.
A bad will turn into bad. It's just not fair, that no-good evil queen. Someone ought to stop her.
If you can stop it, we will.
We will? I can't even get out of the water in either connection or the course. Guess who you could, my dear friend? I am. That's what I was afraid of. Don't worry, Annabelle.
What a joy, it makes me cry. But in this case, it was your news. It was just shocking, of course. But there is better, there is a plan, of course. Does anyone in front of the town meet? Oh, no, sure. We just prepared a feast and make wedding cake for thousands. Listen here, the musicians are already cleaned up. What does this mean, us? Appetizers, people, appetizers!
My plan is working, my sweet creatures.
Yes!
All my efforts are paying off. I have the girl, but there is a crisis.
Precious.
Yes, precious. My time, the time of year, shall we?
I think he should have chosen me.
No, me, silly! Ow! But where is Fleete?
Coming, coming, I can't take this person.
You're pulling yourself quick. The wedding is about to begin!
Ladies and gentlemen! Ladies and gentlemen! We gather here on this lovely beach to celebrate the marriage of Prince Edward and his chosen bride.
Okay, ladies, listen. I'm going to join that wedding party. Then come on, and tell me to come to the beach. They hear the feature, don't know what to do.
Be careful, that chef will cook anything, even turtle soup.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in singing on this most solemn occasion. Me, 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 me!
Here comes the ride. Stuff like a pie!
Girls, what are you thinking? Stop that, this is it! Here, young lady.
Here comes the ride. I bet you lie! If I were the groom, I would go running high.
Stop that, you're trying to ban you to stuff this nonsense!
All right, let's get this thing. Take this woman to be your...
Hey, ah, stop it! No, don't do that! No, ah, no!
If anybody has any objections about this couple being married, let them speak now or forever.
Now, everybody! We do your honor!
We do your honor! We do your honor!
Well, blow me down.
We do too, your honor!
What is the meaning of this? Good heavens!
Who is she? The prince would never marry her!
Yikes! This news is a sham!
Odessa? What now, Odessa? Do you think you could fool me again?
I don't just think. I most certainly have fooled you.
What have you done with my daughter?
Listen to this, Neptune. That's her voice, but how?
Annabelle, so it's true, you are here.
It's all a tricking, Neptune. This miserable queen has stolen your daughter's voice. And the prince she truly loved.
You are a wrecking creature, Odessa. You not only want my kingdom, but you want to break every part of me, as what?
There's only one way to save your daughter now, King Neptune.
What is it?
Of anything you ask. Give me your soft candy play. And then everything, even a word in the water, will be more by you. Yes, I just make him always protest.
Sorry, sir, bring me the magic pot.
Give me your soul, king. Wait, King Neptune, wait! Uncle, come here. What is that you told me about power? I have found my true love. Surely it is more powerful than this wicked queen.
Yes, Edward, those who are powerful, they are.
No! Give me your soul, king, now!
It was you, wasn't it? You saved me when I was drowning. You gave up your voice to me, and you loved me all this time. Here we are, Ann, Annabelle. I can break this spell. Sing, my true love.
No! No!
I think that you want so much, Odessa. I think I'll keep it.
Slowly, sir, stick him up!
You have taught me a valuable lesson, Odessa. No evil is more powerful than love. You can never test to me, never!
These thirsty creatures, take her to a wider prison! No!
All hail Neptune!
Father!
King Neptune!
Will you give us your blessing?
I will make grand, but I see that you have found true love. I want to be my best.
Ladies and sea creatures, mermaids and sea creatures, one and all, I give a toast to my nephew and Annabelle.
Pretty good plan you had there. I thought so. Don't lose your head over it. My head? I heard Fleete's making appetizers. I hope it is the title, too. Can I pay you any money?
It makes no difference if you are on the mercy. The most important thing, listen to me. Is to love one another, it will conquer all. Love one another, no matter if they're big or small. Love one another, it's easy, it's convenient, I care for you, and you care for me. Get over thinking that it's not okay. To say please and thank you to everyone every day. Small things like asking, do you need some help? Can sometimes get your buddy out from me sucking up?
Everybody now!
Love one another, it will conquer all. Love one another, no matter if they're big or small. Love one another, it's easy, it's convenient, I care for you, and you care for me. There are many people who get in the way, but you just tell them, go away. You struggle, then you know right from wrong. And if you forget, just sing this song. Oh, it makes no difference if you are on the mercy. The most important thing, listen to me. Is to love one another, it will conquer all. Love one another, no matter if they're big or small. Love one another, it's easy, it's convenient, I care for you, and you care for me. It's to love one another, it will conquer all. Love one another, no matter if they're big or small. The most important thing, I care for you, and you care for me. Is to love one another, it will conquer all. Love one another, no matter if they're big or small. Love one another, it's easy, it's convenient, I care for you, and you care for me.
Hey, thank you so much for coming to our show today. Um, this wouldn't be possible without a lot of help. A lot of love. Um, so would, would these people please stand wherever you are? Um, Sue Bano, Holly Carpenter, Donna Lefter, Debbie Fisher, um, the students in the back, Miss Darius, Mr. Rixley, Ms. Brightenbach, Ms. Johanning, I think it's still another one. Um, and Mrs. Balldahl. Can we give them a nice round of applause?
Come on, everybody, it's time for the show! Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Cinderella and these are my fairy tale friends. Don't worry, we know this show isn't all about us. We just stopped our fairy tale reading for a moment. To welcome you to our production of Snow White and the Seven Dorks. Our tale will delight you. Our doors won't bite you. Not now, Toto, calm down. We'll be your guides for the rest of the ride. There's much more to go! So on with the show!
Welcome on, welcome on. Welcome to our show of charity. Welcome on, welcome on. Welcome to our show with the presents. A fairy tale adventure, just a once upon a time away. There's magic in imagination, won't you make believe from the way? Welcome on, welcome on. Welcome to our tale of story. Welcome on, welcome on. Welcome to our tale that you should see. Welcome on, welcome on. Welcome to our wonderful tale of a second nature, for listening to me and me.
Once upon a time, a good king ruled the kingdom. He and his wife had a lovely daughter.
He and his wife had a lovely daughter. She was named Snow White because her heart was pure and good as fresh snow. But Snow White's mother died and her father remarried. The new queen looked beautiful.
But alas, the queen was very vain. Her soaking gown always had to be just so.
Everything here had to be in place.
Your dress is lovely today, your highness.
I believe your hair is perfect today, your highness.
My lady, you're the envy of the kingdom.
Your beauty is so admired by all.
Well, it's about time. Now where is that mirror? Mirror, mirror, I'm the one. Who's the fairest of them all?
The mirror always answer the same way.
If I'm a little bigger man, you are fairer than you are.
I am, aren't I?
Of course, your majesty.
As you wish, my queen.
But one day, the mirror changed its mind.
Excuse me? Mirror, mirror, I'm the one. Who's the fairest of them all? Though you're my queen, I'm that's what's true. But Princess Snow White is fairer than you. What? Are you cracked? How dare you say my stepdaughter's fairer than I am? It's a lie, I tell you, a lie!
The mirror never lies, never lies, never lies.
I won't have it! Huntsman, huntsman!
Yes, my queen, how can we serve you?
It seems our little Snow White has taken my place. But I will be the fairest once again. It is time to put my little stepdaughter away. Fetch me the box.
Oh, my lady, are you certain?
Of course I am certain. Fetch me the box.
Dear grace, please me again.
Fetch me the box. I want you to bring me her heart.
Her heart?
You heard me here in this box.
But your majesty, I could never...
She is your stepdaughter, my queen.
She has never hurt you.
Disobey me, and you will pay with your life.
As you wish, my queen.
I can't believe it, that nasty queen. She is the meanest that I have ever seen. I can't believe it, she is so bad. If we kills Snow White, it will be after her. She'd even kill her very own stepdaughter. She never does the kind of thing she ought to.
And we want us to go kill Snow White. But we know that we doubt it isn't right.
I can't believe it, that nasty queen. She is the meanest that I have ever seen. I can't believe it, she is so bad. If we kills Snow White, it will be after her.
The queen had no time for anything but admiring herself in the mirror. She kept Snow White busy, working in the castle like her servant.
She had to scrub the castle floors.
She had to polish the castle windows.
She had to dust off the furniture. She had to cook good dinner every night.
Look at that poor girl!
It just breaks your heart.
She never had any time to play or even read.
Wishy's hour, wishy's hour, when will I be? When will you bring my fancy tory to me? Wishy's hour, wishy's hour, when will I be? When will you bring my fancy tory to me?
Ah! Who are you? Please, no! Please, what have I done to you?
I must obey my queen, and she has sent us here.
The queen? My stepmother?
She is a mean old thing.
I'm so sorry, Snow White.
Please, I beg of you, I've done nothing wrong.
I can't do it, Neptune, so good and true.
Nor can I. Nor can I.
Nor can I.
Run, princess, run! The queen has terrible plans for you.
Run deep into the forest.
Stay away from the castle.
Save yourself!
Oh dear, somebody help me! I'm so lost in the rain. Somebody help me, please! Who am I? Why, I'm the princess Snow White! Snow White, Snow White, Snow White!
Princess, princess, princess!
Oh, please don't hurt me! Me, me, me! Me, me, me! Oh, please don't go! I don't know my way!
Say something, Rocky. No, you say something, I'm too afraid!
You're that afraid, I'll talk quick.
Now let me.
So I need to take charge here. Who are you?
We might have to do the very same thing.
Yes, the very same thing.
After all, it is our forest. Your forest? Yes, it surely is, it's our forest.
It is, it is.
While your forest is certainly a frightening place... I don't know if I like it here.
We love our forest. The breezes are wonderful in the forest. The nectar is sweet in the forest. The milkweed is tender in the forest. Even the nights are right alike.
Would you like to sleep in our rabbit hole tonight?
Silly, she would never fit.
Comply with me. Come, sort out the trees with us. Where is your nest, my dear? I have no nest, and I don't sleep in rabbit holes. You're forest animals, but I'm a princess. Tell me your names, please. Do you have names?
Of course we have names. This is a fairy tale, isn't it?
I bet you're Swishy, and you're Naughty.
Gee, she's that villain.
And she's a blood trap. And she's beautiful. A fluffy princess.
And what's your name?
I'm Baby, and this is my friend, Light Tail.
Pleased to meet ya. Quit showing off, girls. I bet you're Thumper. And you're Cotton Tail. Ha ha, you're Floppy. Obviously, you're Skipper. Shalimar and Chanel. Hmm, now my new friends. I'm so tired. Is there a place I can sleep?
We'll find a place to take you.
Oh, I have a great idea. There's a cottage deep in the woods.
Oh, yeah! It's just around the corner.
And just around the bend.
And soon you will discover just how travels end.
Come with us, we'll take you there, just around the corner. Come with us, we'll go share with a hump, hump, hump. Come with us, we're not afraid, we will lead you there now. Come with us, we'll go share with a hump, hump, hump. Princess, princess, Snow White, Snow White, do not fear. Princess, princess, Snow White, Snow White, plans are here. We will take you, take you far away. Come now, come now, join us, we're just on this day. Come with us, we'll take you there, just around the corner. Come with us, we'll go share with a hump, hump, hump. Come with us, we're not afraid, we will lead you there now. Come with us, we'll go share with a hump, hump, hump.
Why, it's a tiny cottage. Not big enough for anybody but children. Hmm, very naughty children who don't clean their rooms. Just look at that stuff! And those dishes! Can you help me?
Oh, no, our home is in the forest.
Are you kidding?
We don't clean.
We don't stuff. We don't cook. As a matter of fact, we must be good.
Hi, folks, I'm Andy Jorgensen, your state representative. Do you have a problem or a question? Not sure who to call? Start with me. I'm not just here to make laws, I'm here to help. So if you need to find a job, deal with a legal matter, or sign up for healthcare coverage, get in touch. Please call me toll-free, 888-534-0043. You can send me an email, and I'm on Facebook and Twitter too. Remember, I'm here to work for you. I'm here to help. Hi, I'm Andy Jorgensen, your state representative. It's a simple fact. When the temperatures drop, our home heating costs rise. If you're struggling to pay your energy bills this winter, I want you to know help is available through the Wisconsin Home Energy Assistance Program. Just call 1-866-HEATWIS to start the signup process. But call now, because funding is limited. And remember, as your state representative, I'm always here for you.
Let's go home, Grumpy. About time, hungry. It's Quentin time, Grumpy. Quentin time, Quentin time!
I hope, I hope, to make your troubles go. Just keep on singing all day long, ah. I hope, I hope, I hope, I hope. For a young girl to go, inside her silly camp, ah. I hope, I hope, I hope, I hope. It's home when we go. I hope, I hope, I hope, I hope. I hope, all seven in a row.
Ah!
I hope, I hope.
Whoa, hold up there, men. Something looks peculiar. Hank, huh, huh? It's a light out yonder.
It's coming from our window.
Who could it be?
Varnets.
Pirates.
Rascals.
Gather round, all, we'll sneak up and catch whoever dares to trespass. Ah ha, pop the varnet right handed.
One, two.
Hey, Doc, that ain't no varnet. It sounds more like a, like a Archie, Archie. Like the lady! Can we keep her, can we keep her? Certainly not. No kids, no pets, no ladies. Ah, she's waking up! Why, you're not naughty children, you're little nun!
Hey, there, who you calling little? What you doing in there cottage?
You must be Grumpy. And you're happy. That's me! Sleepy? You're sleepy. And you're so sleepy. You're bashful. I bet you're that. What's your name? I'm Snow White!
She's the princess. Out the door, you, right now.
No kids, no pets, no princesses. Oh, please don't send me away! You see, the queen is after me. She sent her huntsmen to kill me. Uh, the queen, she's a mean old thing, but you sure are beautiful.
Yep, yep, beautiful.
Why, thank you! If you let me stay, I can cook and clean and take good care of you. How does that sound? It really looks like you could use the help. This place does look a lot better, men.
I've been looking for it, it's my favorite pillow. Hey, you found my answer, history!
Dad, can we keep her? Well, I guess you can stay.
Stay, or stay, Doc.
What's for dinner?
Will we take a nap first?
Ah gee, ah gee. I'm hungry. Let's eat.
Yep, yep, let's eat.
Yes! Yes, I made this delicious stew for you. But you'll have to wash your hands first.
Wash your hands? Why would we do that?
You silly little men. Nope, nope, no, silly. This spells nothing but trouble. You mock my words. Meanwhile, back at the castle. Uh, yes, I wonder what that wicked queen is up to now. What's in the box, Your Majesty?
Never you mind, my dear, I want my mirror. I want it at once. Ah ha, my dear mirror. You must have some good news for me now. Mirror, mirror, I wonder who's the fairest of all.
If I tell you, you'll break me in.
Oh, don't be silly. Break you, of course I won't break you.
Promise you won't break me?
I promise, I promise, I promise. Cross my heart, now speak up. Oh, you're my queen, our fairest true. But princess Snow White is fairer than you. What? Snow White is dead, you stupid mirror. The huntsman had brought me her puppets, and his hair in this box.
Ew. Oh, gross!
Silence!
How could you, Your Majesty?
Lady, you've been had from the very start. That fox bears only a wild pig's heart.
Ah, I've been tricked, ever. You, you're in on this. You've been lying to me, lying!
Remember your promise.
I guess, my guess. You may go, my dear, but make sure not to trip. On your way out. Oh, dear, what a pity. Service, clean up this mess at once.
Yes, Your Majesty.
So, I have been tricked, ever. We'll see about that. Ahahaha!
So the queen went out to the haunted forest where her evil spirits were being held as prisoners. She ordered all of her evil servants to come in as the strata and wine.
Come to me, my evil kitty!
Sorry, Tiger Lily.
Are you deaf, sweetie? I said to cut her buns and let her go.
But I, you...
If you don't do it, you'll walk the plank.
Terrible, terrible, don't want that to happen, dude.
Over here, Tiger Lily.
See you later, Tiger Lily.
See who later!
I, Tiger Lily, of course.
Shiver me timbers, Captain Hook. You've been tricked. Catch us if you can.
Peter Pan!
A long time ago, on the river now. I was born and was oh so sweet. I was nice, I was kind, till I got old at that horrible captain's feet. I couldn't believe, but with my own eyes I saw his greedy, slimy grin. As he puts on his boots, which look just like leather, but are actually crocodile skin. So I snapped my jaws and ate his hand. I know how that must have looked. But when I had a bite of the captain's hand, let me tell you, man, I was hooked.
You are a hero, Peter Pan, you have saved Tiger Lily. And for your bravery, we make you an honorary chief. Your name should be known around the world. This is your Indian name.
Big Chief Soaring Eagle.
Big Chief Soaring Eagle.
Wear your feathers proudly. I, Silver Arrow, honor you.
I, Great Wolf, honor you.
I, Brave Hunter, honor you.
I, Strong Warrior, honor you.
And now our beautiful Indian princesses will dance for you.
I, Rainbow, friend of clouds and rain, thank you.
I, Flower Song, friend to everything that grows, thank you.
I, Flashing Smile, friend of happiness, thank you.
I, Shining Star, friend of moon and stars, thank you.
I, Wildflower, friend of free spirits, thank you.
I, Goldenbird, friend of nature, thank you.
I, Tiger Lily, friend to all, thank you.
Tiger Lily, Tiger Lily, Tiger Lily, come! Thank you, Big Chief Soaring Eagle.
What do you think about this, Wendy? I am an Indian now, Big Chief Soaring Eagle.
That, that's nice, Peter. Now, everyone gather round, and I will tell you a story.
Yay!
Once upon a time, there was a very happy family. There were two boys, John and Michael, and their big sister Wendy. They all lived together in a cozy warm house.
I don't think I like this story.
One night, children far, far away, but they missed their mother and father.
What? That cannot be right. I thought you were so happy here in Neverland.
Oh, Peter, who want to go home?
But if you go, you'll have to grow up.
I won't mind, everyone has to grow up someday.
But who will make sure we brush our teeth at night?
It won't be long, and you'll remember to do it yourself.
Well, then I don't care what you do, go!
Can we come with you, Wendy?
Sure you can. Peter, that's all right, isn't it?
You're all going to be sorry. They'll make you grow up, and you'll have to go to school.
Really? Is it true? Can we really go to school?
Of course you can. See, Peter, it won't be so bad. Yeah, I miss mother and father.
I miss Nana.
I'm not going with you, I won't grow up, I won't!
All right, boys, get your toothbrushes.
Hey, let's go!
Hey, boys, boys, get control of yourselves. If you're not coming with me, let me give you your vitamins.
One last time.
I don't want any of vitamins. Just leave them here on the stump.
Ready, Wendy?
Promise me you'll be missing me again. Come through the nursery window.
I am just a boy, I cannot be expected to keep promises. Just go. But watch out for Captain Hook.
We'll be careful. Bye, Peter.
Bye, Peter.
Go on, all of you, I don't care! Guess I should take my vitamins one last time. Oh, Tinker Bell, I'm so glad you're still here. Oh, Tink, I'm so sorry I banished you from Neverland. You see, everyone else has left. There's just nothing left to do but take my vitamins. Don't worry, Tink, Wendy left it for me. Tinker Bell, what happened? Captain Hook? He poisoned my vitamins? Tink, you drank it to save me? Oh, Tinker Bell, what can I do? I'll do anything to save you. Tink says she thinks she can get well if you all help. She wants children to believe in fairies. Do you believe? If you believe, clap your hands. Don't let Tink die! Captain Hook will pay for this. Come on, Tink, it's hook for me this time.
Ha, thought you and those boys could escape Neverland, eh?
I'm Hammy, a brute.
Not until you tell me where Peter Pan is.
Never!
Come on, boys, I'll give you a nice present if you tell me where Peter Pan is.
Never!
Very well then, Steve, prepare the plow.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Wendy, you're first.
Oh, no, we can't watch.
Wait, Captain, listen. The crocodile! It's coming from over there.
Yeah, over there. Peter Pan!
Hurry, everyone, fly away! Tink, fly everybody home to safety. Just you and me this time, Hook.
So it is. What are you going to do now, fly away?
I'm no coward. Take that, and that.
Shiver me timbers, I'm dying, I'm dying!
Quit crying, Hook, it's just a flesh wound.
But it really, really hurts.
I won't finish you off, but she will.
No, no, I think about the crocodile.
Might as well jump, Captain.
Jump, ju- jump?
Great idea, Tink. All of you can help us beat Captain Hook. We need you to blow as hard as you can to make a big gust of wind. On the count of three. One, two, three.
I'll get you, Peter Pan.
So long, Captain Hook.
Arrgh! Ooh, this really, really hurts, arrgh! Ooh!
Oh, dear. It is all my fault. If I'd have told Wendy to lea- Wendy to leave the nursery, none of this would ever happen.
If only I could hold him in my arms right now. Mother, father, Nana!
It's Wendy!
Wendy, oh Wendy, it's you! Mother, father, Nana! Oh, you're home, you're home.
We missed you so much, didn't we, Nana? We missed you so much, didn't we Nana?
We went to Neverland Mother. There were pirates! And Indians! And mermaids! And we flew! Yes, well yes, I'm sure you did. Now it's time to brush your teeth and go to bed. Would you like me to read you a bedtime story? Oh yes! Goodnight Peter Pan! Goodnight Wendy!
I never let anyone tell me to grow up.
I won't grow up!
I won't grow up!
I don't want to go to school!
I don't want to go to school!
Just to learn to be a bear!
Just to learn to be a bear!
And besides silly room!
And besides silly room!
If growing up means it would be, beneath my dignity to climb a tree, I'll never grow up, never grow up, never grow up! Not me!
I won't grow up!
I won't grow up!
I don't want to go to school!
I don't want to go to school!
Just to learn to be a bear!
Just to learn to be a bear!
And besides silly room!
And besides silly room!
If growing up means it would be, beneath my dignity to climb a tree, I'll never grow up, never grow up, never grow up! Not me!
Not me!
Not me!
Not me!
Yo ho, yo ho, a pirating we go! Yo ho, yo ho, a pirating we go!
I used to be a simple man, a normal regular girl. But now he reads the scurvy law, his name is Captain Hook.
Shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, away we go! Shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, away we go! Our mother said that we should be dainty, fail our faith from the start. But big ladies sounded like working pirates, sounded like fun. Look out we go! Look out we go! A sky like here, at just one eye, and now we have foresight. He once got in a fight with our mom, and it wasn't how we saw it. Ew! Yo ho, yo ho, a pirating we go! Yo ho, yo ho, a pirating we go! Shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, away we go! Shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, away we go! Shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, away we go! Shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, away we go! Shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, away we go! Shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, shiver me timbers, away we go! Look out we go! Look out we go! Yo ho, yo ho, a pirating we go! Yo ho, yo ho, a pirating we go! Arrgh!
Hello greetings, good afternoon. I'm so glad you guys were all able to make the concert. It's actually a really great audience too. Uh, I'm really excited about today's concert. This is the first time that we've had a jazz ensemble concert that's like the school jazz band in, I don't know, a really long time. I've been in the industry for ten years and this is the first time that I've seen it. So, um, we have some really great things happening. And also, we have our new professional ensemble that's having their very first concert as well today. So, uh, as you can see, we've got lots of stuff and that we're gonna play for you today. Um, the concert's not gonna be too long. The jazz band only meets on Thursdays. And the professional ensemble's every other day plus. So, we've got a heck of a lot of stuff to show you. But the stuff that we do have, I think is really excellent. I think you're really gonna like it a lot. Um, it should be a great afternoon of music. And the kids all look so good and they're pretty dressed up right. And especially for the first concert, it's really, it's really something. We got everything put together. So, I'm very excited, very pleased. I'm very glad for you guys to be here and I just want to thank you for coming out and supporting music and supporting the kids. Uh, one quick note. As you'll see up here, we have, well, you may not know, we have whole bunch of new equipment up here, Yamaha keyboards. Um, and we got, we ordered all that stuff this year, the Orgon band boosters, uh, paid for that. And basically out of the fees of the kids who use it the most, which are like the Marching Band Kids and the, you know, the Winter, Grumline and stuff. And they sort of use that equipment all the time and their fees, over time, are gonna pay this equipment off. And, uh, well, we got a bunch of shit on it because we have a great program. And we were able to use it, of course, for school purposes. And so we get to have the opportunity to play on some really, really nice stuff. And, uh, I don't know how many members, active members of the boosters there are in here, but I want to thank them for making the sponsor for us. So, I'll give them a quick... Of course, anyways, thanks all for being involved in those national programs that makes the sponsorship and the purpose of that, that of the concert as well. So, um, again, very, very exciting day. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh, again, not too much music, not too long, but it should be some really upbeat stuff and definitely a sort of left turn from what you're used to in going to band concerts here in Oregon. We're gonna start with the jazz band, they have two pieces. Their first piece is called Work Song and their second piece, it has a, it's like a swing chart. Second piece is a rock song called Maximum Block. So, I'm glad that you closed those inside doors, that'd be great. Um, before, before we play the last piece for the jazz band for this concert, a couple quick things. One, the jazz band is going to be going to a festival in Stoughton. Uh, the first time that Orgon will have a high school jazz band represented at a jazz festival in our conference in, at least as long as I've been here as well. And, uh, all, sort of, all of the credit for this really has to go to our bass player, Orgon McCann. She really wanted to do jazz band and I kind of agree with her. I really needed a push because, you know, I, I already work really late a lot. I really needed a push because, you know, I, I already work really late a lot. Also, useless as a private organization. So they visit with their closing, possible families in the area. It's a great tradition to, 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 one of the ways to really do the change of hours. And we do, we have this given progress. Being founded by two children, twice, twenty-five years ago, we've been trapped in the mountains. Upside selectors' locations, owners, executives, wanting to expand within the region's states, even across the country. So we're able to do its own, to, to, to manage this whole mess that are different programs across the country, reaches about its, um, territories, the, the, the villages and cities, counties. So far within your area, in the county and county region, the majority of the villages and cities participating in this program has been, I believe, far surpassing our commitments to be in last year. Just so far in my short list, uh, villages and other private private organizations to bring credibility in this program, not only of the other villages and cities, but we have other organizations like American Family Insurance. They've secured that, that, that position in, uh, University of Madison. Excuse me, University of Wisconsin Madison. So, but then only of those organizations, but the other surrounding cities.
Like, uh, City of Stoughton, City of Evansville, City of Sun, Sun Prairie, City of Fitchburg. Also Middleton Development, which is the city of Mil- Middleton. And other villages, DeForest, so many others. And we even have currently under review by the Village of Brooklyn and also verbal commitment from Verona. So, and Jamesville is also reviewing an opportunity to brand and promote. So the sponsorship with their own ad placement support has been phenomenal. And the reason why I call it a sponsorship opportunity is not only are you getting a chance to brand and promote to this great audience within the print, also the online component, which is a companion website and a digital version of that print publication that you're looking at in front of you. You're helping support this important regional initiative to bring businesses, families, top talent into the area. So I think that's part of the reason why we've been so successful and, and sharing that particular, uh, part of the program to this great, uh, people that are supporting it within the region. So I wanted to provide definitely you all, uh, the, the same opportunity. Now I can take some questions. I know that the, forgive me on that lengthy email that you were copied on in part of your packets, but I wanted to be very detailed in the information provided. So please, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Okay, so questions, anyone? Jeff, Joe?
You publish how many copies of the magazine?
The print publication, we'll print ten thousand print publications, but altogether we have readership annually of well over a hundred thousand. Including, that's including the digital magazine.
So what's the cost for ads?
There are opportunity for, say, for example, if you want to look within your print publication, open up to the City of Fitchburg ad, which is, should be located, I believe, four or five pages into the publication. Let me grab one.
That's on page eight.
This would be an available placement. And the reason why I say a placement is you would have the right to first refusal for the next edition, because we have a multiple year agreement with MadRep to do this same program, uh, yearly, annually. This particular placement would also come with an online ad component on the companion website. So when you click on that ad, it would follow through directly to whatever URL address that you would like to assign it to. It would also include a, your name, your organization name in the sponsor listing and also in the guide to services within the companion website. That particular placement would be, uh, an annual five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. However, we do have other opportunities available in general placement, full page or half page ad size placements. In the full page placement, as notated in the email that was sent you, would come with a medium rectangle, general placement ad on the companion website, also with all those same benefits of the sponsor, uh, listing and also guide to services listing. And that would only be an annual cost of four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And then we also have, would have a half page placement with a leaderboard online display ad. That would be an annual investment of three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
I see the pricing, no, sorry, missed it.
We provide also a great service, that is very important to mention, of ad development services. So we would take your photos, written text, logos, a map, if you want to incorporate it into your, your print and your online ad and develop that for you for no additional charge. And I would send that too, back to the person that you would like for me to work with, either Mike or the Chamber of Commerce. And you would get final approval, sign off before you put that into the print and the online, uh, media components.
Thoughts or questions before I offer mine?
So page twelve here is Stoughton. So that would be the, um, is that a full page?
Yes, that would be the, um, what we call a full page facing the overview section. As you note, to your right, that would be the overview, uh, by the Madison Region Economic Partnership.
What do you mean by thoughts, Steve?
Well, I just, I have some ideas on this. I just wanted to see if anybody else wanted to say things first, please.
In terms of, in terms of making statements?
No, I'm, no, I'm, no, I was going to, I've just got some comments to make about Hoxby getting an ad in the magazine that he's presenting. Just, and that's, that's what Matt is asking us to do.
Have you been to the chamber director yet?
Uh, no, I have met with Michael and then provided this information, but I have not met with the chamber.
So I'm a little bit confused because it would seem to me that the chamber would be the first stop. And perhaps the village administrator would be the second stop. And I'd be more interested at this point in Mike's opinion, since he's responsible for the budget and Judy's opinion, since she's responsible for business development than in offering my own opinion.
Okay, that's fine.
Who would develop the message? Is there a thought being given to, who was in the village's staff or working for it? Who was he looking for?
Well, I, I haven't, you know, I met with Matt maybe about a week, week and a half ago.
Yeah, two weeks ago.
Something like that. And, um, Matt showed up and, you know, I, I got this, the email, uh, last week from him. And before I actually started really thinking about working on it, it, it's not, it's not a budgeted item. So, um, I really haven't moved forward. I mean, the board, you know, says to, to go ahead and do it, then I will, you know, I would sit down with Judy and, and probably somebody upstairs on staff and probably as a team, we'd probably develop it, but I haven't really got to that point. If, or doesn't want to do it, then, it, it would have to be a budget amendment to, to place an ad at this point.
So that ties into my thoughts. I think what Matt has presented is certainly interesting. I could be of benefit, my kind of glance through this. You know, there are communities all around us that are involved and I think that gives them some real good publicity. It adds her nicely, has good information and so on. I get Jeff, I think the chamber, um, should and probably would like to be involved in something like this, see where that fits together. Probably one of my bigger concerns is one Mike mentioned, that this is not a budgeted item. You know, it's January nineteenth right now and we went through the budget and our, our department heads all have to cut things out of their budget. And if we come back this time of year and start adding in something of this type of expense, I think we're, we're, I just think it's bad timing with them having turned things down, went through the budget process for things they didn't get from that if we, if we did this. So that's my concern. To me, it fits a lot better in our two thousand sixteen budget process. And I don't know, we'll see what, what people think, because I'm only one person here. But, um, to me, the best timing, we come back in, what, September, Mike?
Um, I would even start, maybe even, if, depending how this goes, if it ends up being in twenty sixteen, I'd probably do it in the summer.
The timeframe in which I'd normally come back into the Madison region and work on this particular project is no, starting in November. And normally we're wrapping up the project as far as the ad space, securement phase of it. That's what we're working on right now. And that's normally finished up in the next couple of weeks. We do have the added benefit of delay billing on, uh, particular clients that would like to participate in delaying that billing until the publication date, which is May of this year. So, um, the added advantage of, of being involved in the publication this year, that I want to make sure you're aware of, are the paid placement locations, that's a guaranteed placement of your choosing, that what is currently available.
What did you just hear us say though? I mean, you're, you're, you're like following up a sales to overcome an objection. This is a village board meeting. What, what did you just hear?
I don't understand, sir.
We have a budget process and it's not set according to your timetable.
Okay, well then what we can do is you can use the current rate sheet that has been provided and use that for your budgeting purposes if you would like to participate in the next edition.
That is my question. So, so Matt, if, so if we start budgeting in, in June next, next year, we could, I can bring this forward to the board and working with the chamber, we could, these prices would be pretty similar to for a twenty sixteen placement?
The general placements, because the paid placements would be the ones that are first come, first served. Yeah. So the general placement, yes.
Pretty close, okay.
Yes, definitely.
I'd agree with what Jeff said earlier, that I think it's real important to work with the chamber director who is sitting right behind us here, so.
Sure.
Because I would think, I mean, they would want input into this and, uh, the type of ad, what that would be and, and I'm sure they would open their checkbook to help with it. She looks away. You didn't hear me, right?
Well, that's what some communities have done. As you noted on the, the City of Fitchburg ad, they partnered with their Chamber of Commerce. So you, they're partnering, partnering opportunities, you know, to do things like that.
On a lot of things, so. Does that work for everybody, two thousand sixteen budget process?
And I would just add that maybe, maybe Mike, when something like this comes to you in the future, maybe take it to the chamber first and see what they think instead of bringing it right to the board? Does that make sense?
Well, but there was, there was a little bit of a time element here that, you know, and it, it, the thing is, if the board doesn't want to do it, then, I mean, this, it starts with the board. It's, I'm not trying to be bureaucratic, but it's not in the budget. So for me to start talking to Judy and other people, if you don't want to, the board doesn't want to budget the money for it, what, what's the?
Yeah, but at this point, we don't, the chamber should be involved. We don't know if they want to be involved and whether or not they have any money to pony up. So to me, it makes a lot, like twenty-five hundred dollars is a lot different than fifty-seven hundred dollars. That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't know if the chamber has, you know, could split it, but that just makes a big difference to me.
Okay, I see, okay. Well, I just, you know, it sounds like it's, probably should start with the budget process, probably the cleanest way of doing it. It gives me time to, to talk to the chamber then.
Yeah. And Matt, you'll try to contact Judy at the chamber and talk with her?
Um, next year or currently?
Well, I think right now. Yeah, I think that's the way to go. So is that, does that work for a?
Yeah, I think I would second Jeannie's comment. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, Mike, about it starting with the board, but from my perspective, it actually starts with you. And your recommendation as to the budget kind of drives my thought process.
Okay.
So, uh, I would agree with Jeannie's comment.
Okay. I would do it next time.
Jeff, I'd like to apologize if I offended you in any way with my answer.
Uh, I appreciate your apology and I apologize if I offended you anyway with my interruption.
Sounds like, that's like one of those commercials I see.
Sometimes the information I give is, you know, it's pretty lengthy, it's pretty detailed. It's just the, the procedure in which we work with and securing the spaces. But, thank you.
I have a personal sensitivity to being sold to as opposed to consulted with. And I was feeling I was being sold to, so.
Oh, no, the, the, my purpose today is to educate. And, um, I just want to make sure you're informed of the process involved to securing the spaces for general placement, which is not a first come, first served. They're always available versus the paid placement. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll work on this during the two thousand sixteen budget process and you can get a card to Judy and go over there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, man. Okay, our next item is item four, approval minutes from August eighteenth, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, seeing none, uh, all in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item five is approval of vouchers. Uh, we have vouchers tonight in the general offering fund in amount four hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions? Mr. Ballack's not here, it's all quite. I hope somebody lets you know that. Okay, seeing none. Uh, again, we have, uh, vouchers in amount four hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents per approval. And I would request roll call, please.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Udrow?
Yes.
Grineer?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item six is community input. Anyone wish to address the board tonight? Okay. Do you want to wait and come, we can come back to it?
Oh, it's okay.
Okay. Yeah, I heard a lot of good comments on them. We appreciate what the chamber did and public works and early helps with that.
Yes, you did.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you for your leadership on that, Judy.
Yeah, thank you.
You have the knack for getting things done. We appreciate it. Okay, item seven, proclamations and announcements. Item A, board comments, anyone? Seeing none, we'll go to B, staff comments. Anything over here? It's all quiet. Item A, communication miscellaneous business, pump house fundraising. The Gefte, Gefte family donated five thousand dollars. And Dane County Arch grant for three thousand dollars has been received.
That's just a FYI for, just to keep the board posted on that.
That's forty-some thousand now.
Uh, over fifty. Well, including the grants.
It's amazing.
Yeah, Randy's done an amazing job.
What he has done.
And the community.
Yeah.
Andy and the community.
Okay, item B, discussion of possible action regarding reviewing base bid and alternates from low bidder. How do you pronounce that, Mike?
Mizey.
Mark, what? Mizey Construction and possibly wearing the contract for the bike trail. So that's what is before us. Comments from staff on this?
Uh, as you can see by Greg's letter, we had the bid opening, uh, I guess, I was pleased with, with the numbers we got. There was a wide range of numbers, as you can see as well. So there's a lot of interest in it. I think we had eight or nine bidders on it, which I was happy to see. So it is what it is, I guess.
So we have bids to do, uh, phase two, phase two and three and an alternate for asphalt.
Steve?
I would make a suggestion on the asphalt that we wait till everybody's here.
Steve, Steve, I'm sorry, can I just, can I explain this so the board knows? This is before the motion's made. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. If I could, please.
Go for it.
I'm not sure which page it's on the computer. Let me find it here.
Are you looking at bids, Mike?
Yeah, it's my, it's the Excel spreadsheet I did.
Page three, thanks.
I just want to make sure that the board understands what this, oh, where is it? Oh, there it is. It said thirty-three, Steve?
Uh, I think it's page thirty. I couldn't tell for sure. I'm the same page as you. Is that the one that has the, some of the amounts in kind of a lime green or greenish color?
You're saying page thirty, right, Steve?
Yeah.
It, it is page thirty. Yep, that's it.
So what page was that again?
Page thirty.
Thirty?
Yep. So that, so phase one is, is done and so we, you know, we, we plugged in those numbers. And so phase, so we bid out phase two and then as an alternate, we had phase three. And then, um, the second alternative was the, the paving, uh, possibility. And what, what this sheet shows is that if we, this is, we're not, I'm not talking about paving now. I'm just talking about just finishing phases two and three, which would be the completion of the trail. We would use the balance of the twenty-eight, two thousand eleven county grant. We'd have the seventy-five thousand from the county grant. We have eighteen thousand dollars coming from the town of Oregon. We have, uh, twenty thirteen borrowed money that we would use. We would apply some ATC money that we received this past year. But then it would require some, some borrowing this year to complete the trail. So that's, that comes up for a total of three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. So that's, that comes up for a total of three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And you see the two footnotes I have in there is that there's over thirty-seven thousand dollars of contingency in this budget, and on Phase One, we only use three thousand in contingency, so we're hopeful that, we're hoping that we end, end up not using most of that contingency, which, which would obviously help the budget. So in, in the three ninety-five is thirty-seven thousand dollars of contingency, just so the board knows that.
Okay.
So then, in addition, that would be, would be paving of the whole trail for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So if the board wants to do Phase Two and Three, and the board wants to pave, you got to add fifty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's what you'd have to borrow for in two thousand fifteen for the trail.
And that would eat up the contingency?
The contingency is, the contingency is in the three ninety-five budget.
So it wouldn't touch the contingent? The contingency would stay there?
It would stay there, right.
So we would borrow two hundred and fif, two hundred and eighteen thousand?
Approximately, yeah.
And the contingency of thirty-seven thousand would remain in place?
Yep. And then if we ended up not, we borrowed the money, if we end up using it on the thirty, twenty-five thousand of it on the bike trail, because we didn't spend the contingency, we'd spend it on a, on a road or something like that, we'd end up spending the money. I just wanted to make sure the board knew that, before we start approving things, that we're going to have to borrow money to complete the trail, and if you wanted to pave it, so.
Can you remind me, does Phase Three take us all the way to Fish Hatchery Road?
It does. It completes the trail.
Uh, and I have a, a question that I don't know that's come up yet, but I know when I, when I ride my bike, and I want to say it's Badger, the Badger State Trail, I get on it, Fish Hatchery Road over there by, by the grocery store. Anyway, there's, there's a state permit that I have to buy.
Yeah.
To be able to get on that trail.
Well, the cap, that's the capital city.
Capital city trail.
And Badger State Trail, too, you get a state permit.
So is, is there any way for us to look into, or have we looked into, a, a trail fee to help the village pay for the trail and, and additional modifications like paving, if we chose to go that way?
Yeah, we talked about that a long time ago, and I don't remember where that went, except we would look at it in the future, right? And we certainly, we certainly...
You, you, the board could certainly do that. I mean, it, it, the, the one thing that I've noticed, particularly on the Badger State Trail, this is the first year, this past year, excuse me, that I was writing, that there actually was somebody checking, on, on a consistent basis, almost every Saturday or Sunday, somebody was, and he was pretty smart, he'd actually move where he was standing, so. But for a while there, nobody was checking, so that, part of it is, you can put a fee in, but then you got to have somebody out there.
Yeah.
It's almost like an honor system, you have someone to buy.
Would that be the same thing as, as people have to have license for their bicycles?
Well, you'd have to have, you'd have to have an ordinance, too.
Yeah, you would have to, yeah, we, yeah, you'd have to be able to find somebody, and if they didn't have a permit.
Yep.
You know, this problem I have with this, okay, if, if, if we would go to paving, it's a lot of money. We could, if we're going to borrow money, I think we need to be doing something with our streets here in town. I've had so many complaints about our, how, how bad our streets are, and, and we can only do so many at a time. If I'm going to borrow money, and I think the bicycle, our trail could wait for a little while, and do our streets first, and then see how that bicycle trail goes for a while. That's just my personal feeling.
Thanks, we are borrowing for streets.
Yeah, we're going to borrow, we're going to come back to the board and talk about borrowing about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for village streets, and we're also doing about ninety thousand dollars in Janesville Street, and then about four to, about four hundred thousand up in Tiff, too, so we're going to be spending four, five, almost six hundred thousand dollars on streets this year, I mean, over the village overall.
And, and I know people are really concerned about this, I mean, that's a big, mean, some people, a lot of people, they say, well, my, my street is such a, I know even the street I live on is getting terrible.
Yep. And I would also add, in addition to that, is that when we did strategic planning, we had seventy percent of people said they wanted the bike trail again managed, either agreed or strongly agreed, so there's, there's strong support for that, too. In fact, that was the, that item got the strongest support of anything on the survey, except for keeping the senior center library downtown. I mean, it's clear, I, I talked to Mr. Boggs today, I had forgotten he wouldn't be here, but he said he thinks we need to get this done. He said, you do it when you build the trail, otherwise it may never get done. He said it has a much bigger boost for economic development if it's blacktop, because people with road bikes will use it, they'll come off the Badger State Trail at some point in time, right into Oregon, people will go right in there. Mark, what's your thought on blacktop right away as opposed to waiting?
Well, just from a maintenance standpoint, I definitely support paving.
Yeah.
Right away.
I, I did, I did forget one thing, that the Rotary has committed to providing ten thousand dollars towards the paving, if you have to mention it, so. Which is not on here, that, I need to, I need to add that on here at some point.
I think that's, you know, I think both are very good, but I think it needs to get out there to people saying, you know, that they'll say, why are you paving, the people that don't use the bicycle trail, okay? Why are you paving that when, when some of these roads are terrible? People, I don't know how we're going to get that out to people, but...
I, I think, I think, I'm not, I'm not proposing that we pave it, I'm, I'm remaining neutral on this, as Steve knows that, but...
We, we need to get that to people.
I think, I think through the capital improvement plan, when we present it, hopefully to the board in the next couple of months, there'll be, there will be a detailed list of all the street projects that will happen in the next, next five, five years, yeah.
You know, people are really concerned about it.
No, I appreciate it's a good comment, yeah.
You know, I appreciate that, and I, I'm concerned about the streets, too, especially the county roads, because they're the worst.
Oh, yeah.
Those are the ones that, we get blamed for that, and we're fixing those. And that's, a lot of that's taken care of next year, so that's going to make, I think, a huge difference to minds of people, and, and to me, you know, a bike trail, library, other things, you know, a lot of people don't use the library, but they still pay for it, don't use the party department, still pay for it. It's part of having a balanced, well-functioning community. I, I know the chamber supports the bike trail, they always have unless that's changed, and, and feel would be a benefit, a benefit to our total community, so.
And one of my concerns about the bike trail remaining unpaved is, there's been a lot of work that's gone into creating the bike trail, and when I think about packed gravel, I just, I think about erosion, and it's just a matter of time, and a matter of a couple of seasons, and we're going to probably have to go in, go in and reconstruct the bed before we could pave over it, which would only add to the cost of the paving.
We'll, at a minute, we'll probably have to reshape it twice in the summer, spring and then later in, in the, in the summer, but yeah, you're right. If, if it doesn't get paved now, and I do support that, because my, my feeling is, if it doesn't get paved now, who knows how many years it's going to be before it does get paved, and the, the movement is on, so to speak, to get this trail built and get it usable, and I think blacktop won't make it just that much more usable for everybody. But you're absolutely right, Jeff, that there's, it's high maintenance if you don't pave it.
And there's a lot of developers right now that have been waiting for the economy to come back, and I don't think we've quite felt this yet, but one of my concerns is, as the economy comes back and these developers get back into the business of developing, cost of asphalt's going to go up, and cost of contracting is going to go up. So I, I agree with Darlene that I think we need to address both simultaneously, but if that means we need to borrow for both, and we've kind of proposed that already, right? We're going to have some construction going on, on the east end of town, and on the north end of town, and on the south end of town. I think there's a way to get it all done, and, and help, help all of the residents.
Yeah. You know, I mentioned earlier, possibly waiting with two people, I'm ready to proceed. I wanted to throw that out there to see what other people thought. They can bring it back if they want to, because they're not here, based on what we do tonight, if they would like to do that, so. But I agree with the idea, I think we need to get it done, I think it's important, you know, Mark's department has spent short staff for years, and if we leave it gravel, we're just adding a lot more work for them to do, and that's going to come out of things that they're, can't get done already because they're short staff, so. To me, I mean, to me, that's another little reason to get it done, because it helps Mark's department, and Mark has been more than patient, waiting for staff, it's been since, forever, before he said addition. I think that helps there, but the other thing...
Not to necessarily make a football analogy out of this, but it's kind of like having a ball bounce off your helmet in the last few minutes of a game. If we don't get it paved.
I think I saw that, Joe.
Okay, so we're ready for motion, I think.
To, to proceed with paving, I would be, two, let's see.
Phase Two and Three on paving?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
I'd second that.
So we had some discussion, and on the idea, I know, Darlene, the bike license thing bothers you, I understand that, bikers aren't going to buy licenses, stick on their nice bikes, it's just going to happen. I personally have no trouble at all forwarding a pass to use our trail, and it could be right at the start of the trail, and it would be in the honor system, and we're not going to have people with time to check that, but I, I really think a lot of bikers would buy it, just because they like the trail, respect it, no one needs the maintenance. And whatever we pick up, there would be a plus.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll vote for it if we be, be sure that we, okay, we pave the bicycle, but also we take care of our streets.
Yeah.
If, if we borrow for both, I can, I can see it.
And we have, I think, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for streets in our budget this year, and I think we'll keep right on. Don't know if it'll be that much, we'll keep moving that direction, I think, because we got to get it done, there's no doubt. It's just part of a good, well-functioning community, so. Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to second to complete Phase Two and Three of the bike trail and put asphalt on as part of that process. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, it's viable. Thank you very much. And I would like to thank the board for sticking with this for four years, because it took